Good afternoon. My name is Kathleen Casey and I serve as Chair of the Financial Accounting Foundation. I'd like to start this afternoon by welcoming our stakeholders turning into this virtual meeting and thank you all for joining us. Today's meeting will include reports to the Board from the FASB Chair, our GASB Chair, the FAF Executive Director, and the FAF Treasurer. We will also receive reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council, as well as a report from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. However, before we get to those reports, I want to make several announcements with respect to appointments. First is Mr. Marion G., who has been appointed to the FAF Board of Trustees to succeed FAF Trustee Jeff Esser, whose term concludes on December 31st. Mr. G. currently serves as the Finance Director for the Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District, a role he has held since 2015. He has additionally served in several positions during his career for the Government Finance Officers Association of the US and Canada, including as past President, as well as Chair and Vice Chair of the Treasury and Investment Management Committee. We've also be appointing Mr. Robert Hamilton to serve as Vice Chair for the GASSAC effective today, August 23rd. Mr. Hamilton, a current GASSAC member, is the statewide Accounting and Reporting Services Manager for the state of Oregon. The Board welcomes him to his new role and thanks him for his continuing service. In addition, the Board also named one new appointment to the Private Company Council earlier this month. Mr. Michael Chang, a National Professional Practice Partner for Fraser &amp; Dieter, based in Atlanta, Georgia, will be succeeding Yan Zhong, Chief Accountant Professional Practice Group of Elsner Ampere, when her second term concludes on December 31st of this year. We want to thank Yan for her service to the PCC and look forward to working with Michael, who had no brings a deep knowledge and commitment to private company financial reporting obtained during his prior experience working as a project manager on the FASB staff. The Board also reappointed Ms. Holly Nelson for a second term on the PCC. Holly is a member of the Board for Silver Star Brands Inc., based in Oshkosh, Wisconsin, and has agreed to serve another term, which will conclude her service on December 31st, 2025. Holly brings over 15 years of experience working with audit committees to the PCC and continues to add a valuable perspective to the group. With that, I'd like to next move to our regular agenda. And the first item of business is to approve the minutes from the Board's May 18th meeting. If there are no comments or changes, I'd like to have a motion to approve. May I have a motion?
So move second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Thanks so much. So we're now going to move to the reports from the FASB, the FASAC, the GASB, and the GASSAC. And we will start with the FASB. Rich, do you want to offer your report?
Great. Thank you, Kathy. And I believe all the trustees have a copy of our second quarter FASB Chair Report in their materials. But as part of my report today, I would like to briefly discuss the completion of our agenda consultation process and how that feedback has shaped our ongoing agenda, followed by a discussion of our investor outreach efforts and updates on our current technical agenda projects and our post-implementation reviews of key standards already in play. Turning to agenda consultation. During the quarter, we brought our agenda consultation project to a successful conclusion by adding new projects to our research and technical agendas, completing or forging a new path forward on existing projects, as well as deprioritizing and removing several other projects. On June 29th, we issued our final FASB Agenda Consultation Report, and that report is available on our website. The report summarizes in detail the robust stakeholder feedback obtained during our agenda consultation project and how that feedback has influenced the Board's technical and research agendas and standard-setting process. The report describes how we addressed all stakeholder input over the course of the project, and our extensive process was completed within one year of issuance of the ITC. As a result of that project, we have added technical agenda projects on the accounting for and disclosure of digital assets, software costs, and environmental credit programs. We've also added new projects to our research agenda, including projects on financial key performance indicators, consolidation, accounting for financial instruments with ESG-linked features, accounting for government grants, which was the subject of a recently issued ITC, as well as the statement of cash flows. We do use the research agenda to gather additional information on potential projects and to explore solutions that the Board can consider when evaluating whether to add a project to the technical agenda. The input from our agenda outreach also assisted us in redefining the scope and direction of existing technical agenda projects, including our projects on disaggregation of income statement expenses, as well as our project on income tax disclosures. The extensive feedback we received also contributed to the Board's decision to remove certain projects from our technical agenda. The feedback from all of our stakeholder groups was tremendous, and the increased participation of investors played a key role in our agenda consultation process. Investor participation was up threefold from the 2016 Agenda Outreach, and the seven most frequently cited investor priorities are either now included on our technical agenda or undergoing further analysis as part of our research agenda. I do want to thank everyone who participated in this important process. Continuing with investor outreach, I'm also pleased to announce that we recently issued our second annual Investor Outreach Report. Our report, which summarizes our interaction with investors, highlights our efforts to seek a wide range of investor perspectives. The FASB staff engaged in more than 485 investor interactions over the year ended June 30th. Substantially, all those interactions were the result of FASB-initiated outreach aimed at soliciting a wide range of investor perspectives. The report is also available on our website, and I encourage our audience to take a look if they haven't had the opportunity to do so. I'd now like to turn to our existing agenda and the post-implementation review. As part of our ongoing reference rate reform project, we issued a proposed Accounting Standards Update, ASU, that would defer the sunset date and set forth in the previously issued guidance and amend the definition of the secured overnight financing rate swap rate, as well as an exposure draft related to an EITF consensus on accounting for investments and tax credit structure. We also issued a final standard aimed at improving the comparability of fair value guidance for equity securities. And in response to a recent agenda request, the FASB added a project to its technical agenda to amend transition guidance contained in our 2018 ASU on accounting for long duration contracts issued by insurance companies. And we recently issued an exposure draft on that same topic. And we expect to issue a proposed standard on segment reporting, an area of great importance to investors, during the third quarter of 2022, as well as a final standard related to supplier financing arrangements. Our post-implementation reviews of the Revenue Recognition, Leases, and Credit Losses Standard continue to help us fine-tune GAAP guidance in these areas. In the past year, we've issued numerous standards as a result of what we've learned through the PIR process. And we continue to monitor those standards as a means of identifying areas for improvement. The FASB continues to work to earn the privilege of setting standards by engaging in the robust conclusive process that built the comprehensive body of GAAP that we have today. We recognize that high-quality accounting standards that facilitate the effective operation of the capital markets are in the public interest and protect investors. On behalf of my colleagues on the Board and our staff, I thank you for your continued participation in our work. And Kathy, I look forward to taking any questions.
Thanks so much, Rich. So questions for Rich? Michael?
Yeah, thanks, Kathy. Thanks, Rich. It sounds like there's a lot of great momentum and progress on the agenda consultation and investor outreach. And specifically on the agenda, you have technical agenda of kind of current projects, and you also maintain an agenda for research projects. Could you explain a little bit more about the purpose of the research agenda? And maybe provide some examples on areas where the research agenda items have migrated into the technical agenda and what the result of that has been?
Sure, sure, Mike. And it's a great question. So the way that we use the research agenda is really when there's projects or there's ideas of things that we could work on where we really need more information for the Board to make a decision. That could be a greater understanding of exactly what the issue is, but also investors' views on those issues, so that that can all be considered as part of the technical agenda decision, which requires a majority of the Board to approve something going on to the technical agenda. So in a way, it's to better prepare us for that technical agenda decision. Interestingly enough, two of the projects that I mentioned that we added to the technical agenda as part of the Agenda Outreach Project were previously on the research agenda. One related to digital assets, the other related to software. So those are projects that were added to the research agenda and within a very short period of time were moved over to the technical agenda once the Board had the appropriate information to make those decisions.
Great. Thanks, Rich.
Mary?
Rich, as we all know, the recently enacted Inflation Reduction Act by Congress includes a corporate minimum tax provisions based on book income. Could you tell us how you think that act is going to affect the Board's work and how the Board members and staff plan to respond to any pressures that come from outside external parties to affect financial reporting because of its linked to tax?
So Mary, as you and the trustees know, our mission is focused on providing investors and other allocators of capital with information to make investment decisions. We are not focused on, nor do we set tax policy. That being said, Congress did choose to use book income as a starting point for certain entities paying a tax under their new Inflation Reduction Act tax bill. What is very helpful to note is that they have already made certain changes to what would be in GAAP earnings to come up with that tax and made certain adjustments. So while I'm sure we will hear from different constituents on different matters to the extent that we do future standard-setting on areas that could affect book net income, I'm also confident that just like Congress made changes to book income initially setting that tax, hopefully they will make similar changes to the extent they need to in maintaining their tax base. That being said, interestingly enough, it's not just an issue we will have. We certainly will probably get some of that input, as will the SEC to the extent they do rulemaking or issue SABs that will affect net income, as well as the ISB to the extent that there's international filers that would be subject to the tax.
Larry?
Yeah, thanks, Kathy. Hey, Rich, in some of your speeches and public discussions, you have referred to "achievable standard setting." I'm wondering, is that like a prerequisite for something to make it to the technical agenda? Or could you share some more of what you mean by that term?
Sure. And Larry, it's a good question. And I will tell you, you're not the first that asked it. And I've often joked, at least I didn't say "unachievable standard setting," because I have an idea I'd answer a lot more questions if that were our focus. But so what do I mean by that? When you think about the process that we go through in setting standards, we make decisions on adding something to our agenda, what the scope is and what the direction is. And I think throughout that process, to the extent that we're focused on really what's the critical information, what's the most important thing that we could accomplish, what's the timeframe that we would like to accomplish that information? Those all go into play in how we map out the right direction that the Board moves in standard setting. And I recognize my definition of achievable and other Board's members may be slightly different, but ultimately, we're all focused on making sure that we actually set standards and we improve financial accounting and reporting. So when I say that, it's really that thought process we go through to make sure that what we're doing is something that we can envision the end game on. It doesn't mean that we're only going on narrow-scope projects. They may be very large projects, and we have a different path forward. But it's really keeping in mind that at the end of the day, what we're looking to do is improve financial accounting and reporting, and that's through issuing final standards.
Rick?
Thanks, Kathy. Rich, you answered Mike's question as far as new projects and how a project goes from research to technical. And looking at the information, it looks like some of the projects were removed during the year. Can you give us some insight on how that transpires or how you come to that determination?
Sure. And part of it, and each project has a story, right? Some of the projects have been, I refer to them as they're even labeled Phase II, Phase III projects, which means they're a part of broader projects, and they were pushed off as more, I would say, higher priority items in those projects were dealt with in earlier stages, and these were the remainders. We got great input as part of the Agenda Outreach process on what was really the critical needs to investors and allocators of capital. We got input from various stakeholders on operability and different things that we should be focused on. And at the end of the day, you know, I think one thing that I always try to remind myself is the standard setting we don't do is just as important as the standard setting we do. And sometimes, you know, I don't believe we have a sunk cost mentality here at the FASB to the extent that we're working on something and we realize, you know what? Our resources could be better used in another area, or the improvement that we're seeking to achieve is not being achieved in that project. I think it is an appropriate decision to remove it. So I actually think it's healthy, and I think it's good that we are removing projects when we reach that state.
You mentioned in your report the most recent investor outreach review, and I just wondered if you could talk again about some of the key conclusions and whether or not you have any additional initiatives that you all might be undertaking with regard to ensuring that you account for the different types of investors and users of financial statements?
Sure. And Kathy, you know, one of the benefits for that report is, I hope, is providing transparency into what we do and who we speak to. And to be fair, the FASB, we have an open-door policy. There will never be an investor who says, hey, I'd like to give you some input on an accounting standard, and we're not available. We are here, we're eager. And I think what that report does a good job of highlighting is most of the investor input we get is through proactive outreach. We understand investors have a lot of different things that they're focused on. We reach out to them at key times during our standard-setting process with key questions to understand how they use information, what will influence their decisions. As you mentioned, there are lots of different investors, and we make sure that we reach out to all different types of investors. There's no elected body who has the right to speak for investors any more than there's an elected body to speak for the right for any of our other stakeholders. So we make sure that we reach out to that broad spectrum of investors, because they don't all have the same view.
Thanks, Rich. So one final question for you. Can you just touch on the efforts with the ISB on convergence, sort of where things stand with respect to that commitment?
Sure. And interestingly enough, we will be having a joint board meeting with the ISB toward the end of September. So we regularly share information with the ISB on projects that we're working on, on projects they're working on. We have quarterly meetings, myself with my counterpart at the ISB, as well as our staff. And that's all about, because of our joint missions, when you think about them, are all about improving financial accounting and financial reporting. I think we have a good example right now of something that we're doing as part of our research agenda, whereas under US GAAP, there is no guidance related to accounting for government grants. Whereas the ISB does have a standard. We've actually wrapped that standard in an invitation to comment, and we're seeking input on whether or not that or some modification of that would be an appropriate solution under US GAAP for us to incorporate into US GAAP. I think that's an example of our working to see if there are converged solutions that work. At the same point in time, convergence is a two-way street. The ISB right now has a project related to rate regulation. We have a standard on rate regulation that's widely used in the US and by many entities internationally. So we'll be watching their project fairly closely too, because that's another opportunity for them to converge with us.
Thanks, Rich. If there are no additional questions for Rich, I'd like to move to Mike. Mike, can we get your report on the FASAC?
Sure. Thanks, Kathy, and good day, everyone. My report can be found on Master Page 58 in your materials. That report includes activities through the end of June and highlights some recent and upcoming activities as well. Starting with the June meeting, the June 9th advisory meeting began with closed administrative session to discuss the draft FAF strategic plan. It was a very enlightening conversation that we had with John, and we appreciate his input and that of his team. And I thought sparked good dialogue with the committee as well. The June 9th meeting also included discussions on two topics. First topic was on the project disaggregation income statement expenses. During the session, FASAC members discussed alternative principles for consolidated expense disaggregation. Overall, council members were supportive of developing a flexible, high-level principle with clear examples and the potential inclusion of a quantitative threshold, and suggested that the Board considered leveraging existing disaggregation principles in GAAP. Council members suggested that objectives could include to improve investors' capabilities to predict future cash flows and performance, and also reflect how management operates the business. Council members generally agreed that different disaggregation methods should be permitted for various expense line items, for example, cost of goods sold or SG&A, to allow for flexibility while maintaining comparability. They were also supportive of quantitative thresholds, but acknowledged the challenges in establishing one. Council members had differing views about the level of specificity, for example, prescriptive versus a principles-based approach. The second topic was the 2021 Agenda Consultation that Rich just discussed, which provided us an update on how the feedback from the stakeholders on the Agenda Consult has been considered by the Board and what changes have been made to the research and technical agenda as a result of that feedback. And once again, I think the council was very supportive of their direction that the Board was taking in reaction to that feedback. Our upcoming FASAC meeting is going to be on Tuesday, September 20th. That's going to be a virtual meeting, given the upcoming FASB office relocation. However, we're fingers crossed, we're hoping that our final council meeting for the year on December 6th will be an in-person meeting at the new FASB office site. For the September meeting, we plan to see council members' views on two FASB projects targeted improvements to income tax disclosures and accounting for and disclosure of digital assets. We also updated our longer-term outlook on potential FASAC topics for '22 and '23. We welcome any input, any topics you think FASAC should consider in the future. And we also recently solicited nominations for FASAC vacancies for terms beginning in January. It's Sunday, August 19th. If you have any additional candidates you did not have a chance to share, we welcome any suggestions, and we appreciate the ones we've already received. I'd be happy to take any questions, Kathy.
Thanks so much for your report, Mike. Are there any questions for Mike? Mary?
So Mike, would you comment on how you feel that the FASB takes into account the discussions that FASAC has and the input that they're providing? Do you feel like they're being responsive to what FASAC has to say?
Yes, I would say I absolutely feel that way. I don't think we always agree. And as you know, there's many different points of view on FASAC. It's not necessarily our test to come to consensus. So we have members that come with differing points of view, which I think is probably the most helpful part of the dialogue we have. But from my conversations with both Board members and FASAC members, I think both parties believe there's a tremendous value in the exercise and the dialogue that takes place. And I think the council members appreciate the attention and responsiveness they receive from the Board members.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mike? If not, thanks again for your report, Mike. And we're going to move on to Joel. Joel?
Thanks, Kathy, and good afternoon or good morning, depending upon where you are. It's great to see everybody, and thanks for taking some time to hear an update about the GASB. As we discussed in the May meeting, the second quarter was due to be a very busy quarter for the GASB and the issuance of a number of documents. And all of those documents were issued as planned, so it was a very busy quarter. And that included the issuance of Statement Number 99, which was an omnibus statement with several kind of technical corrections and consistency improvements being included. And then in June, we issued Statement 100 on accounting changes and error corrections, which is our prior period adjustment project, and also issued Statement 101 on compensated absences, which we think improves the consistency of how those liabilities are accounted for more consistently between governments and even within a government. In addition, in June, we issued Concept Statement Number 7, which was an amendment to our conceptual framework related to footnote disclosures in which we better describe for our Board and future Boards what characteristics an item of information should have for us to require it to be a footnote disclosure. We did have a due process document that we went over. The Oversight Committee went over it with them back in May to describe all the extensive outreach we did related to that important project, which included two exposure drafts. But that concept statement is now issued and effective. In addition, in June, we issued an exposure draft for a proposed standard on certain risk disclosures. Now, along with that, we are utilizing our electronic input form again, which we piloted last fall to make it hopefully easier for more stakeholders to be able to contribute input into to us on the proposal that we have, which does have a pretty long exposure period of 90 days with comments due by September 30th. That was us trying to take into account that our stakeholders continue to deal with personnel shortages and are dealing with continuing to spend the stimulus funding and dealing with the compliance requirements that that involves. So their plates are very full, so we tried to make it easy for them to provide input with, for example, the electronic input form, but also give them an appropriate amount of time to respond. Lastly, on that proposal, we did produce a couple of very short videos targeted at users to try to educate them on their proposals and encourage and solicit input. In May, we issued an ESG paper, which didn't include any new guidance, but rather was an educational paper about already existing GASB authoritative guidance that intersects with issues that some may currently consider to be environmental, social, or government issues, and that paper is available on our website. Finally, I will say we spent a lot of time in the quarter responding to technical inquiries on GASB 87, our lease standard, which is effective for 2022. As people are implementing that, the TIs are ramping up, although we have had a pretty steady stream of them for the last year and a half. So we're feeling good about governments implementing that standard, but we are spending time trying to help them through that. So those are the highlights for the quarter. Be glad to answer any questions anybody has.
Thanks so much, Joel. Any questions for Joel? Tim?
Hey, Joel. Nice to see you. Sounds like you've been busy, so good work. Maybe a little longer view question. You've probably heard Mike Rawlings asking Rich about, you know, the nature and how does a research agenda come about? Maybe you could just comment on that process and what's involved with the research agenda with GASB.
Sure. We utilize the research agenda in pretty similar ways, although we kind of have a research agenda and what we call monitoring activities. And our research agenda for us are things that have been around for a while. Maybe it's a reexamination or something where there would be a substantive amount of kind of history, and our approach is a pretty academic-type approach with a research paper, that sort of thing. And topics get on the research agenda with, you know, full approval of our Board as we update the tech agenda at least three times a year with input from GASSAC and other stakeholders before the Board would vote to add something to the research agenda. And the monitoring activities are maybe something that's more like digital assets for us currently, something that there's not a lot of background on, but is an evolving issue that we want to kind of understand what's going on in the government marketplace related to that item. And we report back to the Board on that for consideration of, do we need more research or add something directly to the tech?
Thanks for that, Joel. I do think it's really valuable for the constituents to have visibility how forward-looking things, you know, come about gaining traction with both Boards.
Robin?
Oh, sorry, Kathy. I couldn't hear you. Hi, Joel. Thank you for the report. I was curious, if you look forward to your project agenda over the next several years, how do you feel regarding the GASB's sufficiency of resources and your ability to achieve all the success in your agenda?
Rob, we feel good about it. We were probably earlier this year. I might not have answered that question quite the same way, because we were struggling to recruit people for open positions. But we've been, in the last probably two months, we've added an Assistant Project Manager. We've added a Practice Fellow. That position had been open. We still have a couple of open positions, but I think once we're fully staffed, and I'm confident that we can get there, I feel good about us being able to tackle all the projects that we need to on our agenda.
Great. Thank you.
Bonjour.
Sure. The staffs, when our projects kind of intersect with each other, if we're working on something that might be the same type of transaction, even though it may permeate itself differently in our stakeholder world than it does in the FASB world, we at least consider, you know, the thoughts that each team has about that topic. And so we will both, you know, go back and forth with our teams when we're sharing, you know, a topic area such as leases was a couple of years ago, something like that. In addition, you know, Rich and Hillary and Alan and I meet at least quarterly, if not more often. Rich and I and John and I meet weekly. So Rich and I do kind of talk about what's going on in both of our organizations, both how we manage. What's going on in both of our organizations, both how we manage them, but also, uh, with the technical topics and, and what is, you know, new for them, what's new for us. So we, we interact pretty routinely, uh, try to leverage each other's knowledge and resources when it makes sense and when we need to.
Joel, so I know there's been a lot of focus on onboarding, um, for new members and, and Jackie Rec recently joined the board. Can you comment a little bit about how that's going?
Sure. Yeah, Jackie, uh, Dr. Jackie Rec is our newest board member. Term started in, in July and we were really excited to have her. And, and we, we devoted, the appointments committee did get her appointed pretty early, so she had six months plus of, of, of time. Uh, to be able to onboard and we utilized that time to get her up to speed on projects. Uh, but she also comes to us very familiar with a number of our projects and our processes. Having served on GASAC for many years and being involved in task forces on one of our current comprehensive projects. So she was, uh, really has kind of jumped in and in her July meeting, first meeting, she was very engaged, had a lot of thoughts on all the topics. So she definitely has hit the ground running.
Thanks so much, Joel. Are there any other questions for Joel? If not, um, thanks so much, Joel. Let's move on to the GASAC. Beth, thanks so much for your report. Do we have questions? From the trustees? If not, thanks again, Beth. Very fulsome, encouraging report. Thank you. Um, so let's next move to the report from the oversight committee. And we've got David and Tim.
Uh, thanks, Tim. I just add to, to Brian's comments. It was great discussion. I think from a trustee's perspective, I think I was encouraged because of the, the robustness of the discussion. And from someone who's interested in the topics, it was really fun to listen to. There was really intelligent people on both sides between the PCC and the board, talking about great things and a good exchange of ideas and, uh. It, it works the way we hope it would.
Yeah. Thanks so much, Tim and David. Um, very fulsome and appreciate all your hard work. Um. The next report is from John Auchincloss, our FAF executive director, John. No? Well, thanks so much, John. Appreciate your report. Our final report is from our treasurer, David Lillard, on our financials. David. Thanks very much, David. So before we conclude today, um, I wanted to ask the board for their approval of the May 5th. Meeting minutes, which are on master page 51, in which I failed to ask for approval on a beginning of the meeting. So with that, can I get a motion to approve the May 5th Board of Trustees meetings? Second?
Second. Yeah.
Bye. Bye.
No opposed? Excellent. Thanks so much for your approval on that. Um, so this ends the public session of today's, uh, Board of Trustees meeting. I want to thank everyone who did join us today, tuned into our webcast. Um, and I just, um, finally remind everyone that the next Board of Trustees meeting will be held on the 15th of November in Norwalk, Connecticut. So we'll do that in person, which will be a treat to see everyone. Um, so I want to thank everyone again for joining us and I wish you all a good day.